You know better than us.
I mean, I know we're gonna do it.
Oh, just by the third.
Thank you everyone, welcome to the town board meeting of December nineteenth, two thousand nineteen, six P M for the work session. Everyone please stand for the legislations.
Here is to the fire of the United States of America and to liberty public for which it stands, one nation, unregard, and invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So I just, I guess we'll start with just, we'll make it announcements that the agendas on the back of the table in the back are incorrect. The public hearing that was set for Nedlock's own change has been removed for tonight, so we will not be discussing that this evening.
In addition, there was an addition, so it'll be matter, new matter E, discussion of appointment of an insurance agent for the disability policy that the town currently holds.
And we'll have one more, Mike Ayala is on his way in to discuss the parts and repairs we need to hold on for tonight, and he was coming from Monticello, he should be here shortly. The first item on the agenda is the abstract twelve for two thousand nineteen.
Oh, sorry.
No, that's okay. In the absence of the supervisor of the board.
And deputy supervisor.
And deputy supervisor, in the absence of the supervisor, deputy supervisor, I'd just like to ask the board to formally vote for somebody to take over the.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All right.
Aye.
At same.
Does anybody have a microphone?
I'll share.
You can't share, because you can talk.
I'll talk this way.
Yeah.
Sorry.
That's okay, we'll share.
You can try the microphone.
I'll see what happens. So our first item on the agenda is audit twelve of two thousand nineteen, abstract twelve, vouchers one nine two four two six through one nine two seven zero nine for one million six six eight nine one three sixty six. Can I get a motion to approve abstract twelve, please?
I have a couple of questions about abstract twelve.
Okay.
Voucher number one nine two five eight oh, Maserio for four thousand three hundred fifty one fifty three. Um, back in October seventeenth, the town board approved a company to replace our server here. And with several emails back and forth with Maserio and our council people, our town council with Maserio, asking for our, our passwords that belong to us, so that they could get in and change the server, because it's a, it was a criteria that'd be done by the first of the year. So with their sending us an email on December fifth that they would give us the passwords, they still to this day have not done that. So it's actually put the town in a compromised position, because we did not get to change the server, and it's gonna have to be done after the first of the year. And if we don't get our passwords, it's gonna cost the town an absorbing amount of money to do it without the passwords. So I would like to make a motion that at voucher number one nine two five eight zero for Maserio for four thousand three hundred fifty one dollars and fifty three cents be held back until the passwords are given to the town.
Is that held back?
Held back.
Hold out.
Hold out to this month.
Hold out and not mailed.
Not, not paid for in, until they give us our passwords.
And user IDs.
And user IDs.
I don't have the, I don't have the contract on me. Does anybody know if there's a late fee provision? I'm hoping not, but that would just be, I was wondering, back to the board intention that this might be.
For M C F for the.
For Maserio.
Well, if we're talking about contracts, how about the fact that they're.
That they're not, they're, they're not doing.
They're giving us information to move forward.
I mean, they, they, I have an email stating on December fifth, which would have gotten us in just under the wire. Now, there's gonna be several computers in this town that are not gonna work after the first.
No, they're worked, they're just not backed.
Yeah, there's issues, put it that way. So, I mean.
And so, I mean, I got, I got verbal confirmation from the CEO himself that he would, after I demanded that they be handed over, that they would be.
And M C S is gonna move forward, it's just gonna be additional if they've got it going without passwords and user IDs, so we are gonna move forward to get that server changed, but. I think this is our only bargaining point right now to hold Maserio liable to give us the user IDs and passwords that rightfully belong to us.
So I have a motion on the table for that is one issue with the audit.
Do you want separate motions or do you want?
I would like to add something to that motion. I think rather than just holding out the voucher, pulling the vouchers as we've discussed, I think they need to hear from our council as well. Because otherwise, they're gonna say, well, they'll pay it when they get around to it, and that may not happen if, unless they hear from our attorney.
Yeah, she just said that she would call them.
We'll call them, first in tomorrow morning, and tell them the town's position, as well as, I mean, again, demand for the passwords to be handed over. Hopefully, he'll have an explanation for me.
I think, I think they need something in writing, not just a phone call.
Yeah, so, right, you're absolutely right. So I will call them and then I'll follow whatever, what we discussed in writing.
All right, that being the case, I'll second the motion.
The four thousand three hundred fifty one dollars and fifty three cents from Maserio supplies us with our user IDs and passwords. Share anything else?
No, oh, yes, so that, everybody.
Yes.
Okay, so, poll who's second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I mean, I guess these are questions for the finance person, which she's not here. So, um, there's an address on one of the vouchers, that's wrong, there's an invoice that we got in May that was not paid till this month. But the next one that I wanna discuss an issue with is voucher number one nine two six eight one to A One Toilets for twenty six hundred dollars a month. To date this year, we have spent thirty five thousand seven hun- uh, five hundred seventy five dollars and fifteen cents with A One Quarterable Toilets for a toilet that is out at the highway department bar. And supposedly, back a couple months ago, or when they put it back there, it was put there for one of our, one of our bus drivers that drives the dial-a-bus, is a woman. So since then, they have taken it upon themselves at the highway department, months ago, to make the bathroom a unisex bathroom, and have it say that it's for men or women, they actually put a lock on the door so she could lock the door and be private in there. And I think we need a motion to get that picked up and get it out. I mean, it's, it's costing us a lot of money. You know, that, and now, to further finish that, voucher number one nine two four eight eight is also for the bathroom that was brought in from A One Toilets for an emergency in the front of the town hall that, I guess the toilets had backed up a couple times. I talked to Morris Cooper today, who actually is the one that came to snake the lines. He actually put a camera in the lines, he said there is nothing abstracting the lines to cause these backups other than the fact that he feels that the toilets in the town hall should be changed to, like, hard flush toilets, you know, rapid flush toilets. And more water in the sinks, because everything is made to be, you know, like, water saving today, and he says that that's not enough flow to clean the line out, and then the stuff starts backing up and it gets worse. So, I mean, Sean from the highway department has said that he's priced out the toilets. If there's not an issue with him changing the toilets, he said he can take care of it. I would like to make a motion that he move forward to getting our toilets changed, so we can take this building that's in the front out of here also, I mean.
Having, having the highway department.
Yes, he priced them out already.
Yes, Sean did, and.
Eighteen hundred, eighteen hundred dollars for all the toilets in the building. This, this thing costs us twenty six hundred a month, plus the time to do it.
And I think Marcy Sean has an employee who's capable of making.
Of doing it. Eighteen hundred dollars, I think, for the six toilets. I didn't do the faucets.
Yeah, we still have to do that, that's the next step. So I would like to make a mo- motion to let Sean move forward to see what he can do, because there's no issue with the sewer line, you know. It's, what they're saying is the toilets that are in the town now are actually toilets that are made for homeowners. And they just don't have enough water and enough pressure to keep the line clean, so.
So is that something we can make a motion on and have the highway branch move towards that?
Well, first.
We need two motions, one to replace the toilets and one to remove the.
The one from the highway.
One thing outside, well, the one outside here too.
Well, first, let's make a motion to remove the one from the highway department. Sean said he would call and have it removed, you know, so I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So.
And then the second one, I guess I will make a motion to have Sean move forward to, you know, see what he can do with the toilets, then see what he can do with the sinks, and report back to us if there's an issue with it.
So we gotta make a motion to have him purchase those toilets and install them?
Yes. I would imagine, right.
Do you want, do you want it to come back when he has it for this order, or?
No, just, if he can do it, do it, if you have an issue. Right.
Do you wanna give, yeah, do you wanna just get a cap?
You have a three thousand cap, so if it's.
Want to exceed?
Well, you have an account there where they are already.
Okay, so, can I get a motion for Sean to move forward with that purchase and the install of new toilets?
I'll make it.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I all opposed? Okay, so moved, and then I think we need one more motion to remove the toilets that are outside in front of the town hall.
Toilets, yes, I'll also make that motion.
We can't wait.
Well, we can't move them out until we get the other ones fixed.
You wanna wait until the toilets are done?
Well, there's no issues with, with the stuff right now.
The toilets are working.
Yeah, but it does happen.
It may back up again.
And it's, it will happen weekly.
It's been happening after court, right?
It's been happening after court, right? Let's not kick them out of their court.
So let's leave them there.
I guess we'll leave it there till, till it.
Till this is resolved.
Be resolved, maybe in next month's meeting, we can make that motion. So then, voucher number one nine two four two nine, Marlin Bank, that is also something I will not approve. And I recuse myself from voucher number one nine two five one five and one nine two six four eight. And other than that, I will approve the audit.
Okay, so we have first.
We have to change the number.
We have to check, take the four thousand three fifty one.
We put a limit on the one to replace the toilets and sinks, was that three thousand?
Yes.
What about the one that you and I looked at that was, I can't think of who it was for back in May?
Yeah, I, I mean, but she's not here to ask why it was just paid.
But we're not sure that it has not been paid.
What's it for?
The vouchers are here, I forgot, I just took the voucher number. Also, I mean, again, now in December, we're going to approve vouchers, and we actually are approving vouchers with shorts in the expenses that they were, this month, we are over just under a million dollars.
Are you sure about that?
That's totally fair.
Well, again, they're bringing, she's bringing over that capital fund one again for that eight hundred thousand, that, we talked about this last time.
I mean, that's what she's given me, given us.
Well, that eight forty seven, four fifty seven, eighty three is in here. And that was.
Are you getting that, that was for capital fund, she should be.
You remember the number?
Yeah, it is.
I think that's for the, I think that's.
Six seventy four.
I think that's for the year.
You think that's for the total year? Well, what's for this audit? Cause she said these are short for this.
Well, cause her, hers is current month, so for a year to available balance, and it's, and it's a negative, that would be your running balance for the whole year then.
I got that. Yearly gain. What's for this one? Yearly gain, budget.
That's a adjusted budget.
For the inspection on the Hill Street Bridge in Walden.
This one? That's the same number.
Unexpendable balance, right, but that's for the whole year, that's not just this month.
Okay, well, it's just for this one.
See the date on the weather though.
Okay.
Yeah. You would have to go, here's the current month, what they spent.
This and a second.
Well, so, this, this number should be in this number, but this is the current, this is for the total, every code for the whole year. That's the running total at the end.
She said these accounts are negative. Just these numbers here.
But they would be for the, they would be for the total year.
Yearly gain, expendable balance.
I believe.
I mean, I don't understand it. But no matter what, there's no funds transfer for, for what is negative.
Well, we would like to believe, we would like to believe that the last budget transfers we did was gonna get us.
So it didn't. So I may be wrong on that number, not positive, because I don't understand what she's got written here.
I think that's the running total for, for all the funds. Everything, right, cause you're looking at the bottom line number for everything, right?
Right. And you're the date.
Well, there's no transfers for tonight, so maybe we can go back and verify that.
Right. Did you find it?
Yeah, he has it.
Who is it for?
Majeski at Masters, it was the inspection of the bridge on Hill Street over in Village of Walden.
Oh, well, that's the one that we kicked back because you got it.
So, we finally got a little somebody over there, and it is okay. They held the last bill, because Langton Tully, they were waiting for something with Langton Tully, and then once it finally got closed out, they just sent the bill. It was from the original estimate they gave, like, back in December of eighteen, and they actually did it, did the report.
So that's why they, it was.
It was just built late because I guess it wasn't finished, and then it was finally closed out and they sent the bill.
Okay, so that invoice is okay?
That is okay, babe.
So then we're just removing one invoice for four thousand three fifty one fifty three, so our abstract twelve amount will be one million six sixty four, five sixty two thirteen.
We're sure this bill from Majeski at Masters has not been paid.
Yeah, then it hasn't been paid.
Sixteen hundred ninety one dollars and twelve cents.
Okay, so can I get a motion to accept abstract twelve for the one million six sixty four, five sixty two thirteen?
I'll make that motion.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So moved. Okay. So we'll move to, clap, Stephanie?
Yes. This is in regards to the two Borrego Solar pilots, the Melua tax agreements, and two letter credit amounts that have, as you all seen, been approved by Langton Tully. So can I, does anybody have any questions on, on either the letters of credit or the pilots? No, the operating owner LLC is, is for one of them Route fifty two Walden Solar One LLC. That is at State Route fifty two, S B L one dash one dash seventy three point two. And the other one that we are discussing is LLC, the operating owner APR Walden Solar One LLC at Albany Post Road, S B L one dash one dash forty seven point one two two. Um, these have been, I worked with the, like, a tully for the decommissioning amounts, as that is their, they've been negotiating with the owner, and I think John was about with what he was comfortable with, and, you know, the power amounts have, agreements have also been reviewed by the assessor's office as they work together on them.
Does the board have any questions?
No.
So, do you have a motion?
To, yeah, to, so if we can, yeah, so we can make a motion to approve both the pilot agreements, we'll do that separately, because the letters of credit have to be conditionally approved as, meaning you're approving the amounts, but the form still has to come into the bank for me to review and approve and make sure that everything actually carried over at the bank. Approve two pilots, one for Route fifty two Walden Solar One LLC, and the other one for APR Walden Solar One LLC. Uh, final, final review and approval by town attorney.
So we do a motion, one motion?
Yeah, that's fine. So it's the same.
So can we get a motion to approve the pilot agreements?
I like that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So moved.
Second, I ask for the board to conditionally approve the letters of credits that, as I have provided them in the form and substance, including most importantly, the amounts of the bonds, which I'll read for the public to know, for the APR Walden Solar One LLC project, which is, that's one of, Albany Post Road, the bond amount, the, the letter credit amount that we are asking for is five hundred seventy thousand, five hundred and seventy seven dollars and seventy eight cents. So asking for, proving that, that amount for fifty comma amount pending final approval of the letter credit by town attorney's office.
I'll make that motion.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So moved.
And the second one is for the State Route fifty two project, Route fifty two Walden Solar. That amount will be for three hundred and fifty seven thousand, four hundred and eleven dollars and ninety nine cents. I ask that it be, the letters of credit be approved as for substance and decommissioning amounts pending my final approval and authorization.
I'll make the motion.
Can we get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So moved. Next item on the meeting for this evening is to set the date for the reorganization meeting, which we'd like to set for January second, two thousand twenty.
At seven.
At seven P M.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So moved. Okay, next item is a discussion of the Brea bathroom contract, Steph, I think you're up.
Yes, so as you all know, I've been negotiating the Brea Park Restaurants contract with Ludoro of Clean Air Quality Service, Inc. I just need a board input on how they want me to proceed on two items. One item is I propose a late fee if they go past a substantial completion date. It's up to the board if they want me to keep it in, Ludoro objected to it. Um, I like my contracts to have teeth in it, I would advise the board that.
Do you remember what the date is?
Uh, current, so currently the substantial completion date was, I believe it was in May. It was April thirtieth, twenty twenty. But he wants to push it to the end of May, twenty twenty, which I told him I would prefer the contract date be pushed out to a realistic substantial completion date, so we don't have to, you know, we don't want him to do late fees, but I, yeah, so.
So he says he can do it by the twentieth of May?
End of, end of May.
End of May.
Right.
So if he's saying he can do it, why isn't that the date then?
Okay, then so, so stick with the late fees for that, that way I can, that way I can say that's, was my direction. My second thing, I just wanted to check with the board to make sure that, I know that we did not have a bid bond, but the board's understanding is that we are also not requiring a performance bond on the project.
Usually do, don't we?
By recollection, we do, yes.
For one year?
Oh, the retainage, yes, so there would, there will be a retainage, but it wouldn't be a bond, it would just be held back from payment.
Oh, yeah, I think that's what we do, even with the, we held back from payment.
Yes.
The last, we're not requiring, we're not requiring.
Maybe five, maybe ten percent.
It was ten percent.
Yeah, actually, this one is fifteen percent, actually.
It's even better.
For one year?
I believe it's through, I would have to, I would have to check the request for approvals, it's at least one year, it might be, sometimes it's, I guess for this one, it wouldn't apply to hold it for two seasons, so it probably would be a year, yeah. You know, with the health food deal, it has to go, or with the age back, it has to go through two full cycles. So essentially, I'm just asking the board whether their understanding is that in, indeed, we will not be requiring an additional performance bond on the project.
Nothing to hold back for, please.
We're gonna look just at the retainage?
Fifteen percent, please check that out.
Yeah, okay. Thank you very much.
And we have the additional, is that your additional?
Yeah, we have. Yeah, you, you only want, oh, yeah, yeah.
We have one additional, I asked Mike to come, because we did receive an email from him for some repairs that we need to make rather quickly, and if Mike could present what the parts and labor would be for us.
Yeah, the sewer treatment plant, one of the treatment units, these repairs, it's running now, not at full strength, but close to it, but it's designed to run at full strength, have to buy the material from the manufacturer, it's proprietary. Uh, I think you saw the quote from the manufacturer, the material's gonna come in just under twenty nine thousand.
What will the freight be, or is the freight figured in on that?
It's not, I don't know.
So this stuff's pretty heavy, probably, correct?
Yeah, well, two pieces are, not, not super heavy, but it's bulky. It's, I mean, it can actually be picked up by two people, but it's, it'll have to come in a truck, box truck or some sort.
Where does it come from, Mike? California or?
Walker, no, Walker, Princeton, Cincinnati area. Cincinnati area, and they're estimating one to two weeks, only because, normally be one week from the holidays, you know, because Mike always has it for at the holiday season, so it might come, be, take a couple weeks. I don't, Tam, Tam Enterprise has already been there to take the covers off these units, so you can do a full. I don't, Tam, Tam Enterprise has already been there to take the covers off these units, so they do a full inspection, do an order. The minimal that we need, you know, because the way things happen, you get something together and then something else pops up as soon as you put it back together. So we expected, we did a full inspection on both units. The other unit was completely fine except for a bearing, that's why the bearing is in here as well. Again, Tam Enterprise is the ones that out there. They estimate probably a day to do their work, which is usually around, you know, with a crane and whatnot. Probably looking about, don't harm me to, we're really in the five to ten thousand dollar range, order magnitude. And I've been told that there wasn't, wasn't a lot of money in the funds, which would necessitate a fund transfer. If that's the case, we've seen infiltration spike up a lot the last week with all the precipitation, freeze thaw, snow melt. And it's in the area of the sewer main that we didn't camera earlier in the year because when we identified the one leak and fixed it, I and I dropped off almost nothing, thought I had it all fixed. We might very well have, considering the condition of the main, another leak might have popped up in an area that we didn't camera yet. So Tam is estimating about seven thousand to seventy-five hundred, if it takes them a full day to complete that work. So the funds have to be transferred. Our recommendation is transfer enough to take care of this repair and.
Well, when would, if it's going to take two weeks to get here, when would you have to pay for it? That'd be, come out of the next year budget.
The, what are we talking about?
The, the parts.
I suppose, yeah, yeah, the invoice, they'll, they'll put the order through and I guess it'll come through next year.
Today's the nineteenth, so by town, I didn't get bills and can't pay, just do the bills for this month, so.
Okay, I get, I was just, I threw it out there and I was told there, you know, it might necessitate a fund transfer, so that's.
I think we got it. Twenty, we'll get the stuff.
I figured. Is there enough to do to finish the camera work, or just separate from this sewer main?
Probably, I don't know, I don't believe that there's enough in that, in the codes.
This would be the ideal time to do it because now you know you've got infiltration coming into the main as opposed to at some point when, you know, the dry water comes through, I can, can you transfer to it, transfer into the fund? That's the thing, yeah, they're, they're, they wouldn't come through the next year either.
Right, if you do next year, there's a issue.
Well, if they did the work, if they did the work in December, it would be, it would be in December. If the parts come next year, I believe that would be in next year's budget.
Well, the parts may very well arrive this, before the end of the year.
Aye.
I don't know, it's going to be right around, probably right around the new year, you know, but Dave Martin, the rep for the company, he'll, he'll put the order in as soon as the year's made and I guess that's when they'll process the invoice as well. They're not going to, the relationship with the town and the person are not going to pull it up, they're not worried about municipality, so it gets.
How are we looking for starting up the, the new plan?
The new design?
Yeah.
Still waiting, it was, the, the design was submitted to DEC, I think October first, still waiting for, they have ninety days.
You think something's going to start in the spring?
I'm not expecting too many comments from the DEC, which means it should be a quick turnaround to address those comments. So approval, approval will probably come in the spring and town is just working on cost estimates, figure out how they're going to finance it. So you could, I can see what I say, you could go up to bid probably mid-spring, by late spring, go up for the financing plans.
Well, I think this evening we definitely have to make a motion to have Mike purchase these parts for the twenty-nine thousand. And Tam's in favor.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So moved. And do you want to discuss scoping that line again, or do we want to wait till?
I mean, we're looking at this, the money is awful tight in that thing. I mean, it's already, it's already over. The original budget according to this was, and that's according to this. The original budget was two hundred and eighty-nine thousand or up to three hundred and twenty-six nine.
Wait until the beginning of the year and let the supervisor take this portion. Okay, so Mike, you know, please.
I just wanted to.
Move over to the parts and the, and the labor from Tam.
Okay.
Mike, can I ask you to send that email to me? Because it looks like it's an email.
Oh, sorry, any copy on it?
No, December eighteenth. Oh, never mind, thank you.
I'll send the digital copy.
Thank you.
All right.
So come in.
You got it.
Merry Christmas.
Yep.
Thank you. So I think at this time, I'll be going to executive session.
Do you want to just do the disability committee or?
Oh, sure, yes.
So I was notified by Pete Palati, our insurance person in town hall, insurance employee. And he was notified by, I guess she was a company that we were. The disability policy as provided by Wesco, they notified the town that they will cease providing coverage in New York as of twelve thirty-one, two thousand nineteen. So we found uninterrupted coverage for the disability policy with Shelter Point, Inc. But in all of this, we needed a broker. So Pete is asking that we appoint, who we use currently, Rosa Kirin to be the policy broker, also for disability policy now as well. So in, in work of negotiating the policy and such.
You need a motion to that effect?
Yeah, we just.
Just authorizing, appointing Rosa Kirin to be the disability, yes, exactly.
Broker for the disability. I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So moved.
So we need to, it would be the supervisor or his designated, signing this letter to Rosa Kirin and appointing them. If the board wants it done before the end of the year, which I would suggest, it doesn't need to be done before the end of the year, but because the policy starts one, one, one-twenty, and they asked for it to be done, I think it was like middle of last week, but obviously we can have a meeting.
Can we have Cindy sign it?
Yeah, whoever, whichever one of you want to sign it.
I'll make a motion that Cindy's going to. You have to.
I'll second that. I, I thought we gave her that authority here a couple of months ago.
Let's just reiterate it.
For the, for the check signing, right?
Checks or anything else?
Oh, okay, that's, never, I didn't know it was for anything else.
Didn't, I mean, just in case it wasn't, I'll keep the motion to have her sign it.
Can I get a second on that motion?
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And speak.
So what do you, you have to say?
Pete to do that. And the last thing that also we need somebody to sign for, and that needs to be designated at this meeting, is the real property tax service agency agreement. A town, town supervisor or controller needs to authorize the bills to, the tax bills to the county to be printed. We don't have somebody in either of those positions to do it, so we are recommending.
Because the supervisor refused.
Great, I was just going to add that to the answer, yes. Supervisor has refused to sign the real property tax agreement to the county.
And he is the budget officer and he got a stipend for being a budget officer.
Right, it was your, 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 it was budget officer or controller that was, that, her.
Which is both of them. I mean, I will, I will make a motion for Cindy to sign it, but she has to be comfortable signing it, so she may not do it till Monday or Tuesday. Monday.
Tara and I, Tara and I will work on it tomorrow.
I've been looking over.
But I make a motion that she, she does sign it when she's comfortable.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then we have one matter that's outstanding to discuss in exact about, it is specific personnel, so.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So moved. So we move into executive session. Are we going to vote?
As a non-voting.
No, non-voting.
She's out. So we'll be ready now.
I've never even thought of that, to be honest with you. Really? Even when, like, things happen, so whatever connection or meaning.
I'm not sure.
I just give a chance. I would like that. I would like that. I would like that. Jenna beat me to it. She told me she had a good one with you. I was like, where was I? Definitely.
What's up, Megan? Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Are you ready?
We need a letter.
I'm doing a story.
How much longer to Mercedes?
What does it mean to the? What's special?
The boss is a vault in here, it's like.
Yeah. What's going on?
Are you ready for it?
Great show. So anyway, just going to pull it out.
He went, Megan was crazy.
So he's worked on it and I looked and I could get it really.
I'm taking it off time.
No.
You're right.
I got under there and checked it out. Anyway.
So it shows from Rockley and we're all together.
So now I can.
Diane.
Not at all, not at all. I had a ready clip that a long time ago, so it was ready to go. Yeah, I remember a while.
No, we, well, we.
Yeah. Not at all.
And that's why I keep reaching out to you.
Yeah, let me know. I could have emailed it too, you know, because I know Karina was working at the time. I was like, just, I didn't know she had gotten every message. No, how do I find them? Um, do you have your phone? Do you have your phone? Yeah, I can set you up so you'll know when they get upgraded. Somebody just called and talked about it. Do you have the YouTube? So you gotta go up there.
Your eyes are much faster than mine.
Do you want it on the main screen? You just hold, hold it down. Screen locked, okay, I don't think I got that, but you go into. All right, you got it.
It's not, it's not.
And you're, it looks like. Don't worry, it's the latest video.
Maybe that's why I haven't been able to find a button.
Notifications from. It'll give you a notification when it gets, like, I'll take this, I'll upload it to YouTube.
You have it listed, they're all in there, right?
So if you go, if you go into, or if you search it is now, and you go into the playlists? I have them broken down into different categories, so you got Tom Montgomery.
So all people, you have all five videos on that.
Right, it's a quicker way of going in.
No, that's good, that's good.
But if you go into just videos, usually the latest one is in there, so that's why I want big data. So if you go into videos, you can see them all listed this way. But if you want to just go quickly, like, you know, it's a planning board, you know, whatever. Yeah, when I can get the chat. Did you go to the village meeting?
I went to it.
I thought about that. I said, oh, maybe I should go to the village. So now you're subscribed, so when I upload this, you'll probably get a notice that it's a good, I mean, just so you know it's there. I mean, you can turn that off if you want to turn that off every time you hear. Yeah, well, you get, I mean, you always had access to it. It's just that you weren't getting the notifications, but that's just a reminder that it got uploaded, but that's not a big deal because you're usually here.
Yeah, yeah. But like, like today when I asked for a word a couple of months ago, I'm like, how do I find that?
I, I, yeah, it's out there. I think, I think it's in public. Sometimes I have it just private, like, I'm saying you can link it together.
I have to scroll and.
Look for it, and if you knew the date.
But now I can, how you have it categorized, well, jeez.
Yeah, um, that, I wonder if that's categorized, I.
Well, you have it.
I didn't know that, the little bits, though, I didn't know if I put that in a playlist, like, uh, like you just wanted the clip from the beginning of it, not the whole thing. I mean, I only sent you the little piece. If you want the whole thing, it's out there.
Yeah, the first one.
The first one is the clip of the beginning, and the other one is the clip of the, the vote, the actual vote.
Thank you.
Okay.
This is all yours.
Can we make a motion to come out of executive session, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So moved. Before we.
No, this room, no action taken.
Before we end our final meeting of the year, we do have two certificates of appreciation that we would like to present to Mark and Dan for all their years of service.
You're an easy one, Dan has twenty-eight years of service as a town councilman. We did try to calculate, actually Tara tried to calculate the years.
Yeah, I see.
Calculated Dan's, Mark's was much harder to calculate, I'll let her explain.
Okay, so Mark had two non-consecutive eight-year terms, so sixteen years total as town councilman, two and a half years on our planning board, like the farmland preservation commission, he was on it, he was off it, he was chairman of it a few years, we didn't have the board a few years, so I couldn't figure that one out, it was just so, we had to put.
Many years of service.
Many years of service, so, thank you for your service.
Let's get a group chat. Sherry, let's get it together, get a little group chat.
Okay, let's get together. Get in the front, now we're.
Alright, let's. Alright, let's go here first. Uh, Sherry, you need to get a little closer to Cindy, I know you're. One, two, three, and then you're gonna look at Walk a By Times.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
We are very much voting for Mr. Like to make the motion to close the meeting.
Thank you. I'll make that motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
All opposed, aye.